Would you like the cool air this morning?
Yeah, it was great to run there.
Except that you still can't breathe.
Yeah, you still can't, yeah. Terrible.
Ooh, man.
Yesterday, I could not believe how bad it was.
Oh, wow. I was up at D U for an orientation. We're up on the fifth floor of the C building.
It was a late afternoon.
And it looked like San Francisco with the fog blowing in, but it was just, oh my goodness.
And then to see the sun just that orange fall.
Yeah, and everybody's like, "Look at it, so beautiful." I'm like, "No, that's not pretty."
No, it's not.
That's bad.
Yeah, I couldn't, I was gonna walk with my wife. My wife, I can't go out.
Oh, I know. Yeah. All my staff now.
Yeah, that was not good.
It is a double fork. Hmm. And he was trying to get some of the salad. Well, my staff have kids with asthma, they can't.
Yeah, that's not good for them. It's coming along well.
Good evening, Mayor.
You'll hear more about that next week. Allison's gonna come and give a...
Good evening, City Attorney.
Review everything that's coming together. Sounds like it's working out well. It's on our budget right now.
Russell's eating chocolate.
Yeah.
Hopefully with no flight problems going there.
Yeah, this time? Yeah, this time.
Allison jinxed me. Told me her stories. Pretty sure there's an airplane involved in that.
So true.
I'm going in a little bit earlier than normal.
Yeah.
Like, three days.
Up your focus a little bit there. Hey, just let me know when we're recording. Great, thank you.
Is coming back, sir. Okay, good evening, everybody. If I could get folks to take their seats, we're gonna get started here in just one second. I'll go ahead and kick us off. Welcome, everybody, to the City Council Study Session. Our agenda item for the evening is the Police Building Construction Update. Our Public Works Director, Dave Henderson, is present to give council an update on the new police building, and he brought friends. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight.
Well, actually, not as awesome as that's like.
If you don't mind, maybe we'll start with some introductions, and we'll return the favor around the table here, since we have so many guests.
I don't think it's on.
Is it on, guys?
I don't think it's on.
Dave, check it out.
Can you test it? Hold that mute button, and that green light will turn on. Still nothing.
Takes a minute. Now you're turning it on.
There it is.
Good evening, I'm Ed Blodowski with DLR Group Architects.
Hello, I'm Kyle Yardley with DLR Architects.
Donovan Nolan with CBRE.
Good evening, I'm Chris Cooper with Adolfson &amp; Peterson Construction.
And I'm Chad Johnlinick with Adolfson &amp; Peterson Construction.
Chief, if you'll kick us off. Chief, if you don't mind, maybe just kicking us off, we'll continue to go around robin here and just introduce everybody around the table, just so everybody knows who everybody is.
You do need to introduce yourself.
Oh, we all know who you are, but maybe for the love of...
Okay, yeah, I'm John Collins, the Police Chief here in Inglewood.
Thank you, sir.
Laura Berantin, District Three.
Amy Martinez, Councilmember at Large.
Linda Olson, Councilmember, District Two.
Eric Keck, City Manager.
Allison McKenney Brown, City Attorney.
Joe Jefferson, our Mayor and Representative from District One, welcome.
Rick Jullett from District Four and Mayor Proton.
Rita Russell at Large.
I'm not sure if your mic is on.
Steve Yates at Large.
Pretty sure it is. Test, test.
Oh, there you go, you just went close.
I'm Dave Henderson, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Director Henderson, take us away.
All right, well, the team has introduced themselves, and I do wanna say that this is a team, and our project manager, and our architect, and our construction manager, all working closely with city staff to make sure we have a successful project. And a successful project would be constructing a facility that would meet Inglewood's needs for, say, the next thirty to fifty years. As a reminder, the voter-approved ballot issue included several specific items, and some of those are that we provide a modern facilities that meet national certification standards, that we have a modern records and evidence space, secured area from victims, for victims that are away from those that are arrested, and modern internet computers, locker rooms, training rooms, more holding cells, and secured parking. Those were the major elements that were included in that ballot issue. So those elements, along with us building for the future needs, are really what's driving and the basis for all of our efforts here. The construction manager, general contractor, project delivery method that the city selected is really benefiting us now. We're really fortunate in this market of rising construction costs to have a contractor sitting alongside us, giving us estimates, and actually proposing some alternatives for us. They're also tying down subcontractors, which are hard to come by in this market. We're still gonna have competitive bidding for all of the major elements of this project, and we're gonna have reduced risk by the contractor providing a guaranteed maximum price for council's consideration. That's gonna be in early November now, first meeting. We have experienced some challenges staying within budget, within twenty-seven million-dollar budget. We've had to make some changes, and you're gonna hear about those tonight, particularly to the parking structure. The ballot issue and the parameters ordinance did, brought us in thirty-two point six million dollars, and that's what's in the bank. The additional five point six million is available, but that's at council's discretion. So I'll turn this over to Donovan, and he'll go through the short presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Here you go, Donovan.
Thank you, Dave. As you alluded to, we have been working very closely, the three of us, as a team, with the staff of the police team, as well as the city, with Eric and Dave and their team here, trying to coordinate everything that is important that was in the original workplace report that we provided from the interviews with the staff and everyone. So that was obviously the key design element, and what we're going to maybe...
Turn it on.
There we go. Now it's on. All right. So what we'll jump into is really the timeline. About five, six weeks ago was the last update that we provided a presentation, and got some feedback from you guys, and really just kind of from that date forward where we've been. And we'll start really on the design side, with the first phase of the design documents were completed on June fifteenth, which we call the schematic design. That really gave us our path that we're gonna travel down. We've made modifications. We had continued our biweekly meetings, which are really this team sitting here plus a few members of the police team. We sat down every other week discussing design changes and design needs that met with that program, and outlining our overall schedule and making sure we're hitting the target, excuse me, the targets we're trying to hit, which ultimately will lead to the design development, which is the second phase of the design. And that's kinda hidden later this month, which really turned into the GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price Documents. David mentioned a little bit about that and what that means to the overall project, but that locks us into a contract with, exactly as it sounds, a maximum price contract with A and P. Then we start our procurement process with our subcontractors and all the bidding that meets all of our procurement guidelines. We've been working closely to finalize our floor plans. As Dave alluded to, we had to make some changes, and kinda diving into the CMGC budgeting. We got our schematic design budget at the same time, roughly July seventeenth, about three, four weeks later, which showed us that our parking garage was well out of the initial budget. The building itself, with the program we had, was pretty much in line with what we wanted, a little bit under, actually, but we, there was specific scopes that we added and features that we added that maybe Kyle and DLR can talk to in a little bit, that increased that price. Really, it was the function of the program that further details weren't given to for the initial programming documents. So what DLR did is they incorporated that in the design, it increased the cost of the garage a little bit. We had to find a new path, because even getting down to, when I get into the stage, the pricing that we had, finding the price-saving options wouldn't get us in line with that twenty-seven million dollar. So we kind of redesigned a little bit and went to a site plan, a site parking plan, that kinda changed the process of the streets around the area, which we'll go into a little bit later. But as with that SD budgeting process that A and P will discuss, we continued to move forth in our design, making sure we are on track with that saving effort that we're looking at, and tracking towards that twenty-seven million. And we'll talk to it a little bit on the next slide, and then A and P will get into it. But that's kinda the path of the team, that we, going forward, every week, or every other week, when we have our meetings, we talk about materials, we make sure they're in line with that initial SD budget and the savings that we're trying to hit there. That's kinda, that's the benefit that Dave mentioned of working with the CMGC early on. It allows us to know that in-time pricing effort, and A and P's very strong at that, and we feel very comfortable. So, jumping into the next steps over the next month, 'cause you will see us on the first meeting in October as well, we are gonna have our DD and our GMP documents released. That will go out to our team for initial review. At the same time, it'll go out to A and P to start their GMP pricing. The real meaning of that means that they get to bring in their pricing effort from the subcontractors, we'll talk a little bit about that, and helps them establish that maximum price. We are working on our AT, sorry, IT and AV and security design. We, Security Central is a sole-source security provider for the city. They are providing design resolutions, or design solutions for us right now. They will help us out with that package. They will also provide the pricing to make sure that is aligned with the budget. We did do an RFP for some IT and AV solutions and designing. We had three responses, and Acuity is who we are going to recommend, and I know Dave is working with his team to look at the contract for that, and hopefully we'll get them signed up and get them released as well. That'll also be another piece in the next slide that you'll see to lock in that budgeting. And then the last piece is really our furniture kickoff. I'm working with the DLR interior side right now for our initial test fitting and our initial basis of design, we call it, to make sure our furniture that we want fits in there, meets a standard quality. And then what happens is we go out to an RFP for a vendor, who also then solidifies that design, solidifies that pricing. So, kinda jumping into the next piece, the overall budget and the construction cost information. As you can see on the left, that's the same budget that you guys saw last time. We have not changed anything, because we have no information to really change it, other than trying to work down to that budget. As we mentioned, and you'll see on the right, we had our estimate initially in July. With the garage, that three point two million was after an initial price validation effort. A and P, DLR, and myself worked closely on making sure we understood the scope. I think that helped alleviate some of that cost, but then it obviously didn't get us there, so we had to create some additional cost-saving options. That two million, probably half of that was non-program related. So if we would've went down that path, we're talking about shifting the program, eliminating things that John and the team need to function their facility based on that initial report, so... Which led us into the site planning effort of, okay, so what if we eliminated the garage? How can we fit the program requirements on the site without a garage and make a site parking? I'd say the team worked really close together to understand those options. What we've, what we're going to present a little bit tonight for the update is probably the best and most efficient solution to get, to maximize the parking around and the safety of the police staff. So, again, two goals that we wanted to make sure we hit within that original workplace strategy. We were roughly just under four hundred thousand over the construction budget of twenty-one, roughly twenty-one million. There is an additional one, one and a half million of saving opportunities. A lot of that is around the materials and the fencing, which we are currently working as a team to understand. I think we've already realized probably two-hundred-and-fifty-ish thousand on the savings of that, so we're well on track to be under our current target of the budget, which is, which is positive news. And as you'll see here, on the third slide, there is some cost opportunities that kinda shows what we're looking at. We are looking at lifecycle analysis of mechanical systems, things like that that will help us make that decision. And I should note, we will have a commissioning agent coming on board that will also review some of these MEP, Mechanical-Electrical Plumbing, design, to make sure we're in line with that. And they're another integral part of the team that will be with us all the way to the end as well, so... High level, I think what we, what we went into and how we work with A and P, the information they provide us, it really, it guides us to make the right, the right design and making sure we're not over-designing and then pricing later and then having to redesign later, because that's, that only costs us money, because we have to redesign, but it costs us a lot of time as well. So, I'm gonna turn it over to A and P a little bit, maybe to talk about kind of how the estimates are built and the process that they go through with that, so I'll turn it over to Chris. Thank you. So, as Donovan stated, we received a SD narrative in middle of June, so that's basically a set of floor plans showing the layout of the building and the program that's desired, as well as a written document that lists all the program, what goes within the building, the different systems that are needed for the building to operate. We took that package, went out to subcontractors to the community on many of the major trades, the mechanical, electrical, structural, steel, some of the high-dollar, high-scope trades, got their input, they provided budgets to us. On other trades, we were able to use our own in-house costing from previous similar projects in the recent past, and we're able to put together a comprehensive, detailed and detailed cost estimate off that SD-level documents. This is an example of our summary sheet. It's essentially broken down by each of those divisions and the major trades, and we've also split it across through the headquarters building itself, the parking garage, and the site work that needs to occur for the project to be complete. So we were able to track each of those as kind of sub-projects within the overall project, and that's what initially led us to the understanding that while the headquarters building and its associated site was generally on budget, we were seeing the parking garage tracking higher than we initially anticipated. So at that point, we worked with DLR and the stakeholders to investigate the alternative options for the parking and going with the surface parking lot. DLR provided a couple of options of layouts for that surface parking, and we put a price to each of those, again, reaching out to subcontractors using our in-house cost estimating as well. And we were able to realize about a two-and-a-half million dollar savings over the cost of providing the structured parking, without any loss in the overall program requirements. So at that point, we were also investigating other cost, cost savings ideas, and they ran the gamut from mechanical systems to the exterior skin, the materials of the building. So it was a thorough and exhaustive list that we worked with DLR and the stakeholders on the team to really get an informed decision to make those decisions. And I'll add a few things, just based on kind of this estimate summary sheet that you guys are seeing. We, we have a construction contingency and a buyout contingency. Those are contract-related items that A and P has to hold per the contract. They can, we can reduce that based on comfort, but at this level, these are definitely the recommended levels of contingency. The buyout contingency is for the subcontractor buyout portion. We create a GMP, obviously, at a unfinished level of documents. We're at a, what we'll call maybe a forty percent CD level of documents, and then what they create that price, or that GMP, then we have a buyout contingency where the subcontractors then buy out off the hundred percent documents. And there's, if there's scope differences of change, minor changes from here to there, then that's what that contingency's used for, per the contract. If it's not used, it goes back to the owner. So that, that's what that, that piece is in there. There's also an escalation allowance that we agreed to hold, because we're moving at half a percent a month, point six a percent a month, roughly that range of construction cost increases right now. Especially with the labor market, things can even go more wild than that. So, that's, I think, at point five percent for the next three months that we're holding when this was, when this was created. It may, it will change a little bit based on the GMP documents and the timing of that, but we're gonna probably keep that piece in there as well, just to keep it. And at the same time, it's an allowance, so if it's unused, it goes back into the project, or back into the owner's budget, if you will. So, that kind of gives a little bit of description with that. There's, I should say, there is a couple items that say by owner and by, with CBRE budget. Those are in that first-line item back here on the cover page. Those items are covered in there, the use tax and the permitting, those are within our owner's budget. So, that's one of those things that we coordinate with A and P, just to make sure we're not doubled up on the cost, part of the validation process when we go through there. Chris mentioned some of the cost options. This is kind of a current flash card, if you will, of some of the things we're investigating. The yellow items are things that we're still designing and confirming the scope of a little bit. It gives a pretty good rough cost of what we can target to save. The green items are things that we've already accepted, which are really, if you wanna call it minor aesthetics on certain things, you know, like aluminum feeders instead of, for the electrical of the building, that's a pretty common practice. You know, that's an easy exception of thirty thousand dollars, to save some money there. Changing the storefront systems to be a little bit more cost-effective, again, those, that's pretty common sense, and what it does is it gives DLR a target of what they need to do to help have a more efficient design. When I say efficient, it means easier to build, so that way it helps that pricing from the subcontractor side. So, again, this is not a finished list. This will be an ongoing list that, especially when we get to the GMP estimate, there's probably gonna be additional items that we'll look at at that point, depending on where the pricing comes in as well, so... Jumping kind of into the next level, I'm gonna hand it over to Kyle and DLR to kinda talk about what we've done on the overall design from parking garage to site parking. Kyle?
Thank you, Donovan, counsel. As you can see with the new site plan, we've eliminated the garage. The previous garage had a hundred and twenty-six spaces on two levels, and by pushing, by eliminating the garage and actually pushing the parking out toward the street, we were able to capture about another twenty spaces approximately. Secondly, what we're proposing here is that we could park diagonally along Alati Street and capture all of our required visitor parking, and also address the comment from the last council meeting about the accessible parking, which we've got at the northernmost part of the Alati Street. As Donovan said, this, you know, eliminating the garage saved us around, you know, two million dollars from the three million or so that we were over on the garage. This scheme includes a security fence around the perimeter. It also, we're proposing that the parking spaces are covered so that the staff and fleet vehicles are protected from hail and inclement weather. So, yeah, that, what you can see there, you know, is, are the covering, so, over the parking. Pretty much...
Can you point, I'm trying to follow you, what, are the, the kinda angled parkings, are they gonna be covered, or which ones are...
These are not covered.
So, so those would be the visitor parking on Alati Street, and those are not covered.
The northernmost, you said, would be the...
The northernmost would be the accessible parking, which is really just a few feet from the covered entry. So, you know, consistent with the original CBRE program and what we presented to you a couple of months ago, the building really hasn't changed much. We've gone through an exhaustive vetting process with Donovan and A and P and the rest of the team to really squeeze out all the efficiencies that we can. We've optimized building systems, we've met with subcontractors, we've, we've done some little tweaks, you know, and workshops with the police department to get, get all the little functional issues resolved. The big, you know, major moves toward the park and the plaza are still our goals and are still kind of the big principles and concepts for this building. The plaza, you know, right now in this, we're showing it extended out to the park. The entryway is still angled toward the center of the park, not the corner of the park. The lobby is still a two-story lobby that's transparent and open to the plaza, and in this configuration with the northbound traffic along Alati Street, you know, we believe that here's an opportunity now that the plaza in front of the building can begin to be more both a pedestrian but a vehicular, but also shared for public events. So, you know, it's more conducive to street closures and, and street fairs and other things that could, you know, begin to happen in between the building and Miller Park. We've pushed the parking back a little bit off the street, adjacent to the fire station, so that we could maintain a, a green belt between the parking and the sidewalk. We think that's really important. So the movement, the pedestrian movement along there, you know, is really intended to, to be tree-lined, kinda boulevard-like, and to be well landscaped, you know, between the sidewalk and the fenced-in parking for the fleet and staff vehicles for the police department. The fencing material, we looked at many different options, from, you know, solid brick walls to concrete masonary walls, to different open fencing systems, to, to security fencing. And where we've landed on that is we really like this idea of this mini-mesh, which, you know, is like a chain link, but it's a real heavy-duty chain link. It can be as heavy as six gauge, and the openings in it can be, you know, as tight as three-eights or as big as two inches. So, you can have a tighter weave, you can still see through it, but, but the views are more filtered, and, you know, certainly when you look at it at an angle, you don't see through it, but when you look at it straight on, you do, but, you know, it doesn't rust, can't climb it, you can't cut it, and it's put together, you know, in a very robust way, which I think, you know, satisfies the police department's need for, you know, some security in their parking. We have provided some parking. There's an additional, there's eight spaces for the, the fire department, which would be off the circular drive that they currently have, that accesses that, that one kinda sideways apparatus bay. So, so all in all, I mean, this is, this presents an interesting concept. Again, the big ideas about the park and the connectivity are there, but, you know, it also opens up another idea that we had kinda brought up when we were interviewing, which was, you know, maybe someday you, you wanna do something with the whole site, and not having a parking garage smack in the middle, you know, gives you some flexibility ten years from now, if you decide, well, we want a better fire station somewhere else, and, you know, now we wanna, you know, a bigger city-block municipal complex, you know, you have that option with this side, you know, with this kind of a layout versus putting a two-story garage right in the middle that's gonna be very hard to, you know, change later. This is a, an image that, I hope the one you're looking at your screen looks better. This is a, an image that, I hope the one you're looking at your screen looks better than this one. But, you know, you don't see all the landscaping, you know, it's fairly simple. But it is representative of kind of where we're at. We've kept a brick on the building. We've worked very closely with A and P to not tear down a brick building and put up something less than that. So, we think that the materials that we're proposing are hundred-year materials. It's consistent for a project like this for your city. The front wrap, the part of the lobby that covers over is a manufactured stone. It's man-made, but it's pressed, it's made out of stone materials. There's no glues or anything that makes it a cement or a CMU-type product. It has a beautiful veining, and it's kind of a grayish tan. And I think it'll be a real nice addition that sets off the inside of it, which is a composite wood, you know, a brown with a movement in it that, you know, I think will look very warm and be very inviting to, you know, pedestrians as they move along the street and enter into the building. But this is kind of a rendering of where we're at with it. We're wanting a building that has a strong civic presence and that uses materials that, you know, sort of convey a sense of permanence. So, here are just some focus points. I think I covered most of them. Pedestrian plaza, yeah. You know, this is pretty much, I covered all of this. And, you know, this was, none of the things that we talked about in the earlier presentation have changed, other than the garage and going to surface parking, for the most part. And then also the future opportunities down the road, as things may change.
To wrap it up, and that, the biggest point there was that we want to make sure we're building the fifty-year building, right? We're not building something that's gonna be an issue in twenty years or ten years down the road. We're pending a massive growth somewhere within Inglewood. You won't have the ability to stay within this, this building for the next fifty years. So, that's, that's the concept that we're moving forward with, not only on the design side, but on the construction side. So, we want to make sure that our quality of construction matches our quality of design, and then the materials we're picking keep us in line with that goal. Because that obviously was one of the goals within the Workplace Strategy Report, to make sure, and any time you're building something for the community, especially bond dollars like that, it's very important because you don't want to have to go back and rework something five years down the road because it was poorly built or poorly designed. So, I think DLR and A and P are doing a great job helping us go down that path. And hopefully today, with some of the updates that we showed, it kind of gives you a better feeling of what we're trying to give you guys and give the community and give the police staff. So, at that point, we'll wrap it up and open it up for questions in regard to anything you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up for questions or comments from City Council? I have a couple, maybe, just to kick us off. So, that last image there did not show that exterior facade that would reach out, that overhangs the front entry, or was that shown on the side there?
Yeah, it's on the side, it's just the angle. If we had the model, we could swing around. It's still there, and, you know, the walls are still skewed out to kind of, you know, direct visitors in toward the middle of it. So, it's all there. What you're seeing there in the plan is, is the, well-
You go back to the-
I'm gonna do this wrong. Let's see, where's the-
The red line here.
So, what you don't see is that the roof is over this part right here and extends over, and it creates a covered entry. And then, you know, this is obviously skewed out toward the middle of the park, you know, very similarly, and then-
Full area pedestrian only, or is that some sort of drop-off area there? I guess was my question.
Well, this is under, this is under current design, but the-
Side of the building, yeah.
Right here?
On the left side of it.
Yes. That's just, that's plaza in front of the building.
That's the sign for the building.
So, that's pure pedestrian access only. And it's, you know, obviously, it's a shape to pull you in, you know, to the middle of the site. This area right here is potentially dual-function space. So, you know, vendors could park there, and, you know, you could have a farmer's market, for example, right there. You could just close off the street, or you could leave it open one way, and then still have vendors and still have access moving through there. Or you could potentially keep it closed off and pedestrians just flow across the street.
Thank you. Good segue, maybe to my second question, which was, you know, it seems probably critical to keep Alati going one way, that way, for emergency fire access, heading north out of our station there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Because I was thinking otherwise, maybe we could consider, you know, vacating that street. But it sounds like Fire gave some feedback that that was critical to their operations.
We thought about it, and it's a, it's a, it's a good idea, with the exception of whether, if you really need to deploy emergency vehicles out to Hamden very quickly, that's the quickest way. I mean, certainly you could go down Jefferson to the next street over, go down to Galapagos or whatever, and head over. But, but this is the most direct route, and that's why we limited the parking to right here. Plus, if we extend it over, we'd still have to develop a pedestrian connection along the fencing. And then that's just expanding the site onto the Miller Park area, you know, which is a more complicated process for planning and approvals, you know, not to mention cost.
I still have to have access there, so I understand what you're saying. Finally, my last question maybe is regarding energy efficiency. Is this a LEED-certified building? Or can someone please describe the basic energy efficiency that we're sort of capturing with the new rebuild?
It's not, it's not, it's not physically LEED-certified, but, you know, we're in compliance with the ASHRAE ninety-point-one and the IECC, the two thousand fifteen International Building Code. The materials are very energy-efficient. We have an internal group in our office, a performance team, a building performance team, that reviews the project and gives us recommendations for systems and materials and, you know, HVAC units and, and, you know, all those different systems and components to capture and reuse lost energy as well as making the envelope as efficient as possible. So, this, this building, were it to be, were we to follow LEED, we would probably be pretty close to, I would say, hitting a LEED silver. You know, we just would have to go through the submittals and the commissioning for it.
Thank you. And I'll add one thing on that, too. With the commissioning agent that we're hiring, it's gonna help us on the sustainability side. They're gonna review everything, knowing that we aren't, we didn't give the guidance of a LEED-certified project, but we're gonna review it as if it's a LEED building, per se, too. So, when the commissioning agent gets their hands on the DD drawings, they will also do a full validation check of the design and the mechanical systems, and then also the envelope of the building as well, so.
Thank you. Manager Keck, maybe a request might be to internally try to generate some idea of operational efficiencies and how much we're able to save through operations by moving to this new facility, as well as how many emissions perhaps, or, you know, electricity we're able to reduce as far as consumption. Just sort of add that, I think, to our laundry list of projects that we're dealing with on an environmental sort of sustainability piece. Mayor Protem?
Let me, before you go there- Sorry, on your question, too, on the tracking, that's actually part of the pricing request from the commissioning agent. There's an enhanced level that does that tracking for us, that we can do some kind of, if you want to call it after-move, kind of tracking that we can accept that side of their pricing as well. So, there is, there is an option that we'll get to review there, too. And Kyle has something.
Thank you.
And our building performance team has already run models, sort of simulating, you know, estimated energy consumption savings for this building over the base ASHRAE ninety-point-one, which is, you know, a big savings over your existing building.
Thank you for that, and thank you for all of your efforts on this project. Mayor Protem?
Thank you for your presentation. The question I had regarding, you know, sustainability and environmental is, we have solar panels on our facility now. What would be the possibility of expanding that solar panel array to meet more of the needs of the electrical?
Yeah, there's a couple things we're evaluating within that. Those existing ones will probably be more cost-prohibitive to replace. And then there's the, the city basically not wanting to put panels on the roof of the building because it creates a lot more issues for roof replacements and any kind of repairs later on down the road. So, one of the directions that DLR has been given is that these, the covered parking areas will be structurally sound to add solar panels at a later date. And I know Dave and his team are investigating what options we might have there, or you guys might have there, as far as the same process or same program you guys went through with the previous installation of those panels. So, right now, the current panels, Dave's team is investigating on, if they'll take those panels right now. I don't believe they're reusable on the building. So, I know he's reviewing that, but it's something that we are planning to have at a future date, or at least preparing to have that ability, so.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? Thank you, Councilmember Berentat?
Thank you very much for coming and presenting. I greatly appreciate all the work that you guys are doing on this. When you started, you said that there's thirty-two point five million dollars in the bank. And so, when we're talking about coming in on budget, we're still talking about twenty-seven million, right? Okay? Because that other money was garnered because we increased the interest rate. So, we're paying more interest on this. So, we have to, the council still has to make a decision on what we're doing with that additional money because so far, the way I read it, we only approved twenty-seven million. So, we're gonna take a look at that. We haven't, we haven't, we're not spending that money yet. Because the original, I mean, we already had some pushback. I mean, you have to have some sympathy for that they approved twenty-seven million. And at the time, we're told, pass it, there weren't any plans at the time, but that we were more than covered for what we were gonna do. And now, the first one came in, it was twenty-six-nine. And now, we're talking, a few months later, that we're well over what we were originally talking about for this design. So, just trying to make sure that we're staying in the scope of what we agreed to. One of the things that I'm a little confused on the presentation was this emphasis on a community space. I'm concerned both for the safety issues and realistically, why in the world we would make our police facility a focus of any kind of community activities when we have so many that we're focusing on and putting some substantial money trying to draw them, like, to businesses? Because they may pay money at the police station, but they don't want to. I mean, it's not like the kind of work that we're doing in downtown or for city center and that. So, I'm confused because I don't think that that was ever really expressed to try and make this a focal point for any kind of community activity. And I am worried about the safety aspect of that, of even trying to encourage that kind of activity.
And I think, DLR, Kyle could probably talk to that a little bit more, too. I think what we're trying to sell or we're trying to build is a community-friendly, not necessarily community access. So, what we want is, this is a community-purchased or community-built project. So, we want to make sure the community is aware of what's happening. But what's actually happening within the building, the entire building is not community-accessible. There is a component that makes it community-friendly, and it makes it feel inviting and something to be proud of within your neighborhood, if you will. So, that's kind of the direction that we got from the staff team. And if you look in that Workplace Strategy Report, that was one of the goals, was making it feel more neighborly. And the safety of the police team at the same time. So, what DLR has done within that is they've created, you know, I should just turn it over to Kyle to talk about the kind of the safety of police versus community, maybe in a little bit more detail, and he can chime in.
Well, our intent is to make the public side of the building as accessible as possible. So, if you've got business with the police department, there's no hesitation. You're not having to walk up to a fortress, but, but you've got an inviting, transparent, open facility, just like the city hall is. It's not a scary place to come to when I come here, and, you know, it shouldn't be at the police station. That aside, you know, that said, the police station's a very secure building. I mean, everything about it is about security, but, but it's sort of hidden security. You know, it's the, they know the security's there, the walls are built a certain way. The transaction counter, you know, has a certain type of ballistic glazing behind it. But the building is still there to serve the community, and that's very important to us, to design a building that, you know, is actually the community's building, too. The police serve the community, and the building also serves the community. Now, as to the plaza, you know, the plaza is intended to be a public place. It's not any different than, you know, the plaza in front of, you know, a major courthouse or the plaza in front of this building. There is a park across the way that I believe Miller Park's master planned for some, you know, new development at some point. And that's gonna be a city focus. And I think it's important to make sure that the police station addresses, you know, that future activity on the, on the park as well. But only to the extent that, you know, the police station, it's a civic building on some level. You know, it's not a military facility, and so, you know, it is, it wants to be accessible, I think, to the public.
Thank you. I think Manager Keck might have had something else to add here.
Go ahead, I don't have anything else.
Just as a point of clarification, Mayor, the, as you're aware, when we initially went to go sell the bonds, our underwriter was thinking we're gonna pay thirty, three-point-six percent of interest. Actually, when the bond sale was complete, we had an effective interest rate of three-point-two, but really paid two-eighty-five for our funding, which allowed that. So, we didn't see an increase in interest. What we sold in premium was a promise to those bond buyers that they would get a premium of five percent, which we're able to achieve through the bond sale. But the marketplace came, the curve, the yield curve came down extremely aggressively in our favor, and that's what enabled us to sell bonds at a premium to obtain the additional monies.
Thank you. I think it was Councilmember-
Could I just get a further clarification on that? Because the five percent, who's paying the five percent?
Yeah, the, the way those bonds work, the individuals chose to buy those bonds, and it has built into the cost, that's the yield, that's the return. So, I've heard council talk before, Mayor, that they desire to see us pay that money back. Well, that's not how bonds work. The maturity of those bonds occurs in specific years. And so, the whole notion that the city would just turn around and pay the bonds off earlier would not be permitted underneath the terms of the way in which the bond sale happened, as well as the parameters ordinance that was adopted by the council. So, yes, there is gonna be a five percent premium, that's the expectation from the market. But again, the city's paying the overall effective interest rate from the bond sale. Again, net effective is three-point-two, but the sale was two-eighty-five.
Does anything stop us from going ahead and retaining that money and making interest on that, keeping that, so that we can go ahead and make those payments, even if we can't pay it back? Because eventually, no money is free. And so, that's been included in part of the cost, and this isn't additional cost to this. And that, we didn't get five-point-six million or three million free. So, maybe we could save the money and make sure that we're paying those bonds off. But we could still have it benefit the bond, the taxpayers, rather than try to spend it.
Fair enough, and I think that's a fair point. I don't want to take us too far down this rabbit hole.
But that's why it will be a conversation, because-
I totally agree. This is a conversation that needs to be primed and teed up for this council. You know, as soon as we get to this, you know, sort of guaranteed maximum pricing, I think that will be the moment that we can start to begin to have that conversation once we know how much money we need for this project. But point taken, I think that was an interesting point. So, thank you for that information, Manager Keck. I think I'd like to move us on, I don't know if it was Councilmember Russell or Olson, I apologize. I'm gonna go with Councilmember Olson, and then I'll go to Russell.
Doesn't matter. I, thank you, I appreciate the work that you've done and the way that you've been trying to scale it back to make it work financially. I, I have heard from people that I've talked to about it, that they expect us to spend the money that they voted for and to get the top-of-the-line kind of service placement in building that we need. We're way behind, we've been behind for a long time on this. Chief Collins knows this better than anyone else, along with all of his team. So, that's what I'm hearing from people. So, I appreciate that that's what you're trying to do, is get the best building for the money that we have, that citizens gave us a mandate to do, really. I also, I'm kind of intrigued by this neighborhood feel that you're trying to create. And I don't have any trouble with this. I mean, we used to do stuff at Miller Field all the time that was family-friendly. I remember my kids going and watching all kinds of fire exhibitions and how to put things out. And it was a great learning opportunity. So, I would hope we would do more of that, and that you're building that in. I totally affirm. We don't want to cut down any, cut off any relationships with businesses, but we can't always do things on Broadway, either. So, I think- So, I think having a farmer's market, things like, having flexibility in what you're doing, I just, I really appreciate that, along with the garage change, and, you know, thinking about, yeah, you take up a lot of land when you put something like that, so I appreciate that. And of course, well, no one's going to drive cars in 20 years anyway, right? So, that was a joke for everybody. Jet packs are my plan. But anyway, I really appreciate what you're trying to do here. I'm really interested in this conversation. Thank you, Manager Keck, for clarifying the percent. I've heard this thrown around so many times. I'm getting a little bit bothered by it, wondering why, where is this keep coming from, that we don't realize what the exchange is of the two? And I don't know if we should put something out on the website that clarifies it, or what? I don't know.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Thank you so much for coming to present. The question that I have, I am a little bit concerned about vacating Alatty Street, because it's going to limit access to the park. As what, I was talking to a few people last week, and when you drive by Alatty right now, very rarely is there anybody parked on Alatty, unless there's something going on at the, at the park. But it looks like we're cutting down the parking, even though we have angled parking, because there isn't going to be access at the north end? Is that correct? There is not parking access?
Right.
At the north end? So, I have a concern about that, about vacating Alatty Street, and just how it will change the traffic flow in that neighborhood.
I will add, too, we do have a traffic consultant doing a current traffic study of the traffic flows around all four sides, and probably a couple other sides. They're working closely with LOD on the city side to really get the information he's looking for, that's going to help drive kind of our design direction a little bit, too. But that's pending, probably, in the next month. But right now, this is our initial concept, and that's kind of what we're looking towards. So, that's, it's just a concept design that we're hoping to, to hope the flow works right.
Is there a concept design? Is it generated by how close the building is to the street, or it's just a concept design that somebody thinks will look nice?
We could put parking on all sides of the building. It's a little safer not to park along the northern side, because of the building's proximity to the street and the sidewalk. So, it was just a conscious decision that we thought it might be easier to park in front, and in one spot, and, you know, then be able to access, you know, along the park to get to the front door of the new building.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'll add one other thing. There's the opportunity on that north side, that we don't have parking in front of the building, because obviously, we don't want to block off the building, and just having the view access is important for the safety. But with that Miller development, potentially that north side can widen to being the angled parking on the east side of Alatty, whereas we're on the west side. So, you could, when it goes to that project, when that, if something ever happens on that side, that's something that can be evaluated then. We wanted to keep a, you don't want to have a one-way that shifts, so if you move the parking in this design, you would have a shifted one-way street. So, we'd rather keep that one-way street all the way through, on a straight line.
Thank you. And Manager Keck, perhaps if we have any report from our own traffic internally, you know, perhaps giving us a memo on this. Do you know what the gross number of spots, you know, is it increased or decreased by going sideways that way? Is the net number of spots on-street higher or lower with this plan?
It's higher.
And I think we do gain some spots.
It's significantly higher. It's probably twice as high.
I think by angling the parking, would you pick up a few spots on that street?
That's, they're cutting off half of the street, too.
I think, I totally agree. I just wanted to make sure we're clear on the number of spots.
And keep...
So, we're doubling it, and still cutting half of the street.
Because you have the RTD parking spot, you have a spot, like, the north 40 feet on the northwest side, you can't park there anyway, because of that RTD spot, which obviously is going to be a coordination piece to move that stop, anyway. But ultimately, just kind of on how the parallel versus angled parking, you almost double your parking spaces, anyway. So, that's kind of why it doesn't look like that, based on shrinking it down, but the square footage usage of angled versus parallel is about 50% efficiency.
Right. Well, and I understand that, but we're cutting down the amount of space, so we could be equal in the parking spaces.
I think she's talking about on the east side of Alatty, this parking spot, so it would be there.
Oh, correct. I was asking for a net number on both sides of Alatty.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we really haven't, we haven't addressed what the city's going to do, you know, in the right of way, in terms of parking. We've said that our preference is not to park on the north side, and, you know, not to, but, you know, it's really going to probably be a decision by the city. There are, there is room for spaces. We've had conversations with the police department about on the north side, possibly, you know, parking detectives' vehicles, or other agencies being able to park there, you know, more, more for government official business, so they can be relatively close to the building, and not be in the secured area. But, you know, that's a conversation that's kind of been ongoing. There, it's not to say, Mayor, that, you know, there aren't spaces there. Those spaces are still there, we just, you know, they haven't really been, you know, allocated to anything at this point.
Thank you for that clarification. I'd like to move us on to Councilmember Yates.
First, I'd like to say thank you for thinking about the public relations part of this, making the building appealing to the community. The police department, nationwide, they have a hard enough time with people's perceptions, and if your building isn't inviting, then it, I think it's a negative effect towards the department. Our community likes our police officers, and part of that is the fact that they do get out there, and they treat people well, and the building should be like that. I personally don't see a problem with the parking in, not having parking in front of the building, in order to have this look like it's reaching out, and creating a whole park plaza type of thing. It makes that whole area more inviting. We have sufficient, I see that you've done sufficient jobs in trying to make sure that prisoner movement, or arrested people movement are within secure areas, and frankly, on the other side of the building, away from the entrance where you're having the community come in. Overall, I like this design. The, I think you're right, when it comes to going to a flat parking lot versus a building structure, because it is always one of those things that people look at, and it's like, do I really want to go to that second floor? Or do I really want to go in there? The potential for the, you know, if solar becomes an issue, or something we want to do there, on top of the covered parking is an ideal spot. The only thing I would say is, you know, if that is potentially an option, you know, could we have some underground conduit? So, if that happens, we're not having to dig everything up, so, while you're doing your dirt work. So, but overall, nice job. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to wrap us up here? Any further comments from our presenters or city staff? Thank you again for coming down, a great presentation. I'll hereby adjourn this meeting, and we'll pick up at 7 o'clock next door.
What's going to happen?
We have different one of these chargers.
If we could look at the parking, it's one of the parallel parking, laid out, but if we could just...
Because it doesn't, when I plug the...
I don't know if it's... If we could just do that, and just... Then that would be, that would be simple enough. I think we, I think we've increased it, if not...
Or it could be the lint. Yeah, I just wiped out a big old ball of lint.
Mayor, who was I going to talk to about teal colors?
Teal colors? Dave?
He put LED lamps in the fountain, so, night, not during the daytime. The dye just reeks of it. You'll see it tonight when you leave, it'll be...
You already started?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, but you can still raise it, just so everybody understands. Yeah, because it, I mean...
So, did you let Phil know?
Have not. Yeah, let her know. Let her know that it was...
Okay.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a pretty inexpensive investment for...
Is there a notice somewhere that you can go off about it?
No, no, it's just, matter of fact, when you were playing with it a couple weeks ago, they were making it go all different colors. It was pretty cool.
Have the lights?
Yeah.
Are they still down there?
Yeah, it's in the fountain itself.
Oh, in the fountain? Gotcha, gotcha.
Teal tonight?
So, it'll be teal color tonight for...
For the ovarian cancer.
Okay. Yeah. Allison sent, Allison Carr sent a message to you, currently Channel 9, the story on our show.